You guys go to the advisory committee.
We own the advisory committee, we present a budget. We don't know what our budget is. Because we are not told until the night of town meeting. So that's why what we proposed, we're all walking in what we proposed, and if the budget changes, it's gonna be an argument on the floor. Because nothing is discussed to try to get leveled out in the beginning.
All right, so can I make the recommendation after our meeting of the 16th? After all our decisions are made? That if there's a discrepancy with the request, that all department heads receive an email?
We're gonna pretty much hand around the budget of 16th. We're gonna have some, between two of us, we're gonna have to...
So that can either be your discretion to email, or we can do that through the selectmen's office?
Or if you want to come in and find, if any department heads wanted to come in and see what's going on, you can.
We're gonna draft off a couple, you know, once we get to pretty much where we want it, we're gonna draft off a couple budgets.
Can I say one other thing about the budget? The budget is put together without quote-unquote raises. It's been, we've been doing this for years, but every other department, meaning the schools and police, it's already in the budget for their raises and so on and so forth down the line all the way. The rest of the townspeople do not get that choice. We get whatever may happen at the end. Instead of watching our whole thing with 1%, 3%, 9%, like some departments are getting this year.
9%? Who's getting 9%?
9%? It figures out to me.
Where is that at?
Who's getting 9%?
Up at the elementary school. By the time you figure their step increase in their COLA percentage, it comes out to 9% almost.
I would argue, as a former school committee individual, and Clarence can speak as well from another town, there's very, very few people that fall within that step and grade where it's gonna get bumped up to 9%.
We got the, we got the new contract from the elementary school.
Well, the contract's a contract, the steps and grades are gonna be there, but it doesn't mean everybody's entitled to it. It's very few and far between.
90% of people are actually entitled to the step and grade, because if they fall into that step and grade, they get the, they get the increase with the step, then they get their COLA on top of it.
But they're not eligible for that step and grade until certain times, and a lot of them have kind of maxed out.
It falls within, yes, you're correct with that. Then it stops with the step and grade, it stops at a certain point.
It's unfair to say they get 9%. You have townspeople, with town employees thinking...
I'll give you an example. The head janitor up there falls under that thing, he's getting roughly 9% increase on his pay coming this year.
And that would be a total different contract, because he's a support staff contract, I believe.
Yeah, because I sat in on the support staff budget hearing, and I didn't see any of them, they're getting, you know, so much every single year, and I mean, I know they get a step and grade, but I listened to them talk about it, and I didn't hear anything about any of them are gonna come up to 9%.
Well, when you do, when you actually do the math, you know, what the, the step, I'm just putting the number out there, is, on his step, his increase is 35 cents, say. Then he's getting the COLA on top of that of whatever it may be this year, I'm not sure exactly what it was.
I think they were like 2%.
But, once you figure it all out, it comes up like 9%.
Well, this, I know for the end of this year, this is the, because their new one starts probably in July, but I know for this year, they will get, their last one on the contract is, they were getting 1 and 3/4%. That's all that they were getting.
I guess what I'm getting at, it would be nice if our budgets, including our salaries, was done all together as a budget. And if it has to be cut at town floor, it has to be cut at town floor, we shouldn't have to go to town floor to argue, you know, 1%, 2%, 4%.
I, I don't wanna say take offense, but I think it's a falsity that when everyone says we get the leftovers of the budget and the town coffers at town meeting, that, ever since I've been on the school committee, the finance committee, well, the advisory committee, and this board, we've never done it that way. It's, we've always looked at what all the other departments are getting.
Do we, do we know what the town employees are gonna get for...
That's what, we're gonna discuss that May 16th.
16th, that's correct. So if anybody wants to know...
It's an open meeting.
It's an open meeting, meet here at the 16th, and then we can hand it all up at that time.
Well, so is the chairperson of the advisory, what Cindy, and they may have discussed it already, can you answer it?
Yes, I can answer, we wrote 1%.
1%. Okay.
So now, now the select board can weigh in on that, as well as everyone else in town. Well, we did our diligence, and that's what we came up with.
So I wasn't involved in that discussion, I'm gonna wait till what they have to say.
I'm just kinda curious to stop.
Yeah, that's where we're at right now.
The town employees get 1%, and we're putting all this other money toward all the things, and, you know, that we need to do no matter what, but I'm just curious where the equilibrium comes in that year.
Speaking of other things, off the subject for a second, trees, at 300 bucks a pop, do we have enough money in the budget that you put forward to make sure that in between your budget and the tree warden's budget, that we have something like 16,000 or 17,000 available next year?
I don't know what the tree warden's budget is, I didn't look it up.
Okay, so we'll do that on the 16th.
Well, I spoke with Herb last week in regards to that, of taking that list and seeing how much it's gonna cost per tree, he was happy with whatever the tree warden proposed.
Well, Cindy, you had an email earlier today that you may not have seen yet.
Haven't seen an email.
Yeah, no, no problem, it worked out to be, we had 122 trees, Herb was able to do about 57.
About 50, and then we finally got down, so.
Yeah, so 57.
But even that 122, by the time next year comes around, it'll be 222.
Sure. Just keep the jets and move the jack.
And that's my point, my point is...
That's Herb's argument, is we just do what we have to do, and...
You can't, yeah, you can't cut them all one year, I mean...
No, 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 and I'm buying that. What happened was, we had a list of 122, Herb was able to do 57, leaving 55. The math for the whole year per tree was just under $300. So if you were to just take the 55 and multiply by 300, it comes out to be 16,500.
So, just keep that, keep that, keep that number in mind, and May 16th we'll look at it.
Whatever the tree ward put in, we asked him to tell us who gave us money, and whatever he put in, we, we went with it.
Well, at the same time, that was a discussion long ago.
Right.
And I'm thinking that his assumption was that all the trees from the hearing would be cut, and they weren't.
There was 55 to go.
Well, we were talking, when he came in, we were talking 99 trees when he came in.
All the trees that were on the hearing, as far as I know, hasn't been taken down.
I thought they weren't.
There's a bunch of other trees out there that are, that should be taken down.
Those weren't on the hearing?
That were not on hearings. Because a dead tree or a hazard tree is deemed a dead or hazard, it can be taken down without a public hearing. And that's, that's it.
All right, so the bottom line is money, and address it at this town meeting.
Since we're talking about trees and everything right at the moment, the average figures out just under 300, under $300 for the town or Phil Highway Department to work with a tree guy to take the trees down, right around $300 a tree. The way that he's doing, the way he did it last time around, it's almost, it's just about $600 a tree. So it's almost double the price.
Because special conditions, or?
No, because the highway department wasn't helping build the trees, and how things are going right now, I give, I glad money's run out right now to cut trees down. Because it's not a very good relationship, for a second, so.
All right, so money's gonna be an issue, we'll have to have that discussion. I still think there's a motion on the floor without a vote for the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
On May 16th, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, could I just ask Herb one question? I thought that you had a tree guy that was charging you so much per day.
$840 a day for tree work.
A tree work, but that's just for the work, or is this covered taking the tree down?
No, he comes on, he cuts all the trees, and drops it down on the ground and stuff. He does the walking work, per se.
Okay, so it's, then he charges 600 a tree?
It's not per tree, it's per day.
Oh, per day?
So he could get 10 trees done a day, he could get one tree done a day?
Right, and it only depends how big the tree is.
And for the whole year, cut, looking at the whole picture, average is 300, just below $300.
Oh, okay.
Because of... If, since we're still talking about trees and I'm still sitting here, within two and a half years of me giving up the tree warden's position, the hazard trees and dead trees that created less than two, two years of town Brookfield quadrupled, and now we're behind the eight ball again. Now, every time we go to take down a dead tree, hazard tree, a split tree, or whatever, you know, it's a hazard to the townspeople, to the people that ride and walk on the town It needs to be maintained every year and not let go like it did for the past two years. So, if something needs to be done, something needs to be a better situation to do it all the way back.
I thought you, I thought, one, first question, I thought we were paying the guy 105 an hour to treat that, to help you out.
Say that one again?
You're paying the guy 105 an hour, correct?
$840 for an eight hour day.
No matter when he starts cutting, it's, it's...
So, $840.
So, okay, so if we don't start cutting till 8 o'clock, and he shows up at 7, he's still gonna, he's still gonna get that 105?
If it takes us to get up here and set up and get going, and everything else, he's getting paid from that time.
Okay, so that's, that's my point I'm trying to get to, because at 7 o'clock, you guys are just getting there, and you haven't had the trucks moved up, and he's already ready to go. So we're paying him to get to the site, by the time you get set up, we've already lost the 105, is what I'm trying to say.
No, you're getting more, you're getting more for the money with this guy at $840 for an eight hour day than you are with guys at $1,500 a day.
Well, the question is, is he sitting at the highway barn for an hour?
No, he's doing what he needs to do to get his stuff ready to go, everything else at the same time. I tell him where the job is, he usually meets us here sometimes, other than that, he comes to the highway barn.
Right, okay, well, I'm not gonna get into it, but I just wanna make, you know, we're not gonna hire someone for 1,500, I mean, there's other guys out there too that won't be able to do the job, I'm not saying anything against them, I'm just saying, I've seen some of the invoices, and some of the invoices showed six hours, four hours, eight hours, so now you're telling me it's four hours, I mean, per day. So I'm just saying, that adds up to a lot of money if, you know, if we're not, we're not out there.
Well, I don't know where you see the six hours and the four hours on our invoice, because it's not from us.
Yes.
So you may, you must have to find out who that is, but it's not coming from the highway barn, I can tell you that.
Well, it came right from, I saw an invoice that was from him.
There's no way it echoes from him, I can tell you that right now.
Okay, well, I saw the invoice, I have the invoice, so. Second question is, why was, I thought the original plan when we started doing a lot of trees was you were gonna work with a tree company, and the tree ward was just to pick out the trees, and then we could go through them.
The tree ward...
No, you know, I saw, just, just...
I'm just, I'm just trying to bite my tongue here with the tree ward, and there's people in town that have called the tree ward, the tree wards never return their phone calls until a tree come down, when in fact one wrecked by your house that took the wires down.
That was the first time I used my generator in my house, too, by the way.
Yeah. Those people called twice, and they never got a returned phone call, and they had pretty tired.
That's the first I've heard of it.
I found out about it a couple days ago.
If, so my recommendation if calls, and I think I've told this to Cindy at a department head meeting, if calls come to you, send them to the selectmen's office.
We have been on that, if we get the calls.
Yep.
But the people are not calling the highway barn anymore because they know I'm on the job.
So then they should be calling the selectmen's office.
Then people need to be heads up out there on that.
So if, if...
That's why, in a way, you know, if it needs to be done efficient, it can be done efficient, but if I have to put off a budget, baloney and everything else, I'm not, you know, I'm not gonna wanna do it, so, and I'm not gonna help anybody with it, so the town's gonna have to come up with a lot of money per year to maintain the trees.
All right, so let's have this discussion further on the 16th.
Yeah, one other question, yeah. How would the townspeople know who to call if they have a hazard situation of a tree?
I'm surprised that they even know the tree warden's phone number, to be honest with you.
Right, I don't know how they got it.
So I don't know how they got it.
See, if Cameron, if Cameron at the town hall's closed, and they got a serious issue, who are the townspeople supposed to notify?
911.
If it's a serious issue, yeah, 911.
But I mean, if it's just a run-of-the-mill, and the town hall's closed, and they don't have the...
The tree came down, it was fixed that day.
If it does go to 911, it ends up back in my lap every time.
And you know how to get ahold of me, and I know how to get ahold of him, it's, it's worked.
Oh, could I ask one quick question?
No.
You know the one that came down across from my driveway a few weeks ago? You had to go down, whose responsibility is that to clean that up?
Home owner.
Now, so it is the home owner?
Yeah, it's their tree. We just got it out of the roadway and stuff.
Oh, okay, I was just...
Yeah.
All right, item number four, vacation carryover, we have two employees that are requesting carryovers. Do you guys think, did you be able to take any of these in the next couple months?
First, first two weeks of June, I got paved, and that's holding on, that's the reason I'm asking for it. And as soon as that's done, I'm asking to take a full month off right after that.
You're gonna take an entire month off in July?
Well, the last two weeks of June, and first two weeks of July.
And how does this board feel about that?
How are all your projects gonna be, like river road and things like that?
That's supposed to be happening the first week of June, so I'm kinda hoping that's all, 90% of that's all done.
Has the state given you a date to pave it all, or is it still in the air?
Well, it's, we'll finish one thing, and then I'll jump right, right to that. We have one road that they're supposed to come in, we're gonna take care of that and finish getting that approach doorway so it can be paved, the first full week of June, or the second week of June is supposed to be paved. This River Street, this 1,000 feet of River Street here is being redone and everything else at the same time, so we got these two projects. Once those are done, and hopefully we got everything cleaned up after that, I wanna take my time off. Speaking of this mass DOP for Route 148, we have a meeting in Worcester there on...
16th?
I think it's the 25th or the 24th of the, of the month, in Worcester.
It was the 20, anyway, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's 24th to 25th, pre-construction meeting.
Have they budged on the whole 148, the bridge to the...
We've been pushing, I had a meeting this afternoon with a couple of state guys out here.
Did you confirm that Sturbridge is getting from Town Line to 20?
Yeah, they didn't say anything about that, it's from the Sturbridge, Brookfield-Sturbridge line to the north end of 148, uh, north end of Molasses Hill.
I've, I've heard from Sturbridge officials, like, they're getting all of 148 done, from 20 to Town Line.
I've heard the same thing.
Yeah, I haven't heard that yet, and they haven't said anything about it, and Arthur said they were doing the contract that they had is from the Sturbridge line to...
Have you contacted Bertham or Goby?
Goby's sore.
They've been notified, we've been, kept, keep sending emails and this and that, and trying to find out what's going on. Like I said, I talked to Arthur today, and he was out for a meeting at the bridge, because there's some issues at the bridge down there. There's, it's exactly a mile of road that has to be done from, well, the north end of Molasses Hill to where they finished the bridge job. With their paperwork and everything else, and the contract that they got for the job, and a lot of stuff that they're not gonna have to do on the other job that's 1.5 million dollars to do four miles of road, I think it's kinda crazy, but they go, they get trees in it, and remove vegetation to be cut, and I'm scratching my head with Arthur, I'm going, where is all this? Because I don't see any of it on the road. And he's involved, it's just formality stuff that we have to put together, and they have to do.
Yeah, it's not like 49, 49, that's where you're talking.
Yeah.
At the end of 49, they're digging all the road up.
No, all of 49, if you remember correctly, they paved it a few years ago, they, they did the vegetation up about 100 feet.
But last week, though, I was, when I took 49, I was going to Sturbridge, and they're digging, they were down there digging it all up with the rough surface.
That's 20.
The, to do that mile of road according to their paperwork and everything else, it's like 330,000, it's all, 300, you know, 400,000 dollars to do that mile.
So are you gonna push for that next week, or two weeks from now, or should we get...
I'm gonna, yeah.
Should we get on the phone with...
In, in, in Goby there, there's supposed to be a representative at that meeting there on the 25th or 26th.
From her, from her office?
From her office, so.
So I'll make a note, not to call.
Jesus, we're...
We haven't stopped, we've been, we keep pushing the state, and we keep, you know, you paved it once before, why'd you pave it, you're here now, let's get it paved again.
So, so next question, we have an article for line painting, do we not line paint? Because the state's just gonna paint that road, and that's the majority of the road in Brookfield?
Yeah, we ain't painting that section of road, we ain't gonna waste the time on it.
It's still the same price that we're always getting.
We haven't used last year's line painting, which is being done Sunday night coming up.
We passed over last year.
No, there's money there.
If there's money there, it's just from the account, we didn't, we took it off, we didn't put it on as an article last year.
It was on special.
We didn't put it on, we took it off.
We have all the paperwork, we have all the...
I might wanna check the money, because I remember we took it off one year, I thought it was last year.
It's 7,400 dollars.
Because we all, we all agreed that it wasn't necessary.
I remember one year it was, I don't know if it was last year or when.
I thought it was last year.
Uh, we took it off, I know when it was.
You took it off one year, but you, I'm pretty sure you voted this past year to do it, and...
I would just, I would check, I would check for the money, make sure it's there.
You asked me not to paint last fall, and I said I wasn't done, because we haven't had time, we're gonna wait till springtime to do it.
Right, that's hard.
Well, I remember that, but I thought we took it off as an article as well.
I think it was the year before.
I think it was an article that was...
I'm pretty sure it was the year before.
As long, as long as the money's there, all right, but we're not gonna paint 148.
Not that section 148, we just gotta do from the river bridge to the, to the top of the hill, and that's it.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to allow Mr. Chafee and Mr. Herbert to carry over the vacation, not to go past August 31st. We usually do two months.
Yeah, I wanna take a vacation.
Since you're talking, talking about the vacation, you gotta make a vote on it. You, you people don't allow me to take a month right off.
No. You know, you know as well as I do, you're not leaving, and this isn't us saying, you're, you're not leaving unless you can, so I, I'm not opposed to it.
Absolutely.
I got too much work I do with my, my own house at home that didn't get done the past couple...
Well, when you're done with that, you can come to my house.
No.
I'll borrow your, I'll borrow your excavator, I'll, I'll trailer it down. So do I have that motion?
I do have that motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second, yes.
Any further discussion?
As long as he comes, I'll, I'll give it to him, as long as he comes down to Quaybog Street and puts a sidewalk for me to walk on, he can do it.
Don't think that's happening, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seasonal employee, the applications are in here, I've been informed that none of them are interested?
No, no, no. We've all got all the jobs, we've got all the jobs.
Have we gone back out for advertising?
We've been out twice already, and I don't wanna spend any more money.
Recommendations?
Who moved the common, that everything's mowed up now, did Emory come up and do that?
No, Mike and I, Mike and I have been, we started working on stuff that needed to be worked on, weed whack, so far we got 37 man hours into it.
So here's my recommendation, not to spend any more money. With school coming to a close in a week or two, can we reach out to Bay Path, Tantascwa, Quaybog, North Brookfield, David Prowdy? Go through either their guidance department or their administrative principal, and see if they can make announcements for anyone interested in a summer job?
Sure, if you guys want to.
I have no problem making those calls.
But don't they have to be over 18, though, if they want, if you want to drive the 1 ton?
Some, some of the seniors that are, that are graduating are 18.
Yeah, okay.
What about college kids, they get...
I had mentioned that, too, college kids.
But at, at the same time, that's, the college kid should be reading his ads.
Yes and no?
Kids in high school aren't reading ads, but everybody that's getting out is chomping, and I got out of high school, I worked for Dave, Richard's Furniture, for the summer.
Speaking of, it has to be a certain age to operate power equipment and stuff for the towns, the Mr. Palas. The lawn mower that's, had been being used around the town hall area here and stuff, very, very, very unsafe, and it's disappeared.
What do you mean it's disappeared?
It's gone to the highway department, because it's so unsafe, it shouldn't even been here. The deck's cracked over halfway around it.
The Husqvarna?
No, this John Deere Pushmore that's self-held, that's been used around here. People shouldn't be using these things if they don't know, and I'm speaking out without saying...
I think I'm picking up.
You're gonna, you're gonna have an issue.
It's the first complaint I've heard, but we have to deal with the seasonal, so what, are you guys opposed to trying that the next couple weeks, in our next meeting?
We gotta try something, because we need somebody or someone to, you know, help out. I thought Emory was gonna come up, but I haven't seen him, so, and he hasn't stopped by, so I don't know what's going on.
Have you called him?
I don't have his number.
Would he be willing to take on the seasonal position?
He don't mind doing, helping out and doing some of the mowing and stuff, but he don't wanna do any of the weed whack, and he really don't care to do that, which, I don't blame him. It's, you know, tedious and everything else.
We're coming up against the wall, so we'll try that route, two weeks, reevaluate it, go from there.
True, yeah.
Who, can, can we, through her office, do an ad?
It's throwing money away if no one's responding to it. Let's, let's see what happens.
We've had that twice, and all, with the applications you guys, not to...
So let's see what happens in a week.
Okay.
And then agreement, if it, if we don't get any response in a week, we'll go out for an ad through the selectmen's office. Are we okay with that? Do I have a motion for that, or we in agreement?
I think we're in agreement.
We're in agreement. Now, with the lawn mower, now that you said you just took back, can, do you have another one down there, or Pushmore?
I don't think I got one, Pushmore, and that's it.
It's not self-held?
No.
You don't wanna push, that's...
So what are we gonna do, then, to cut lawnmower up here?
I mowed, I mowed it here the other day.
If, and I, I think we can, we can work that out, to be honest with you, I was very surprised to see the common mowed today, when I came by the common this morning.
Well, I, I've been sick of that, I'm looking at it, that was, that was rolled last Friday.
Well, that's where, that's where I was at, so I was, I was actually gonna call you Friday and get a key, and get it on Saturday and do it myself, so worst case, and before this was mowed over here, I was actually planning on coming down with my own mower to mow the police station, so I'll, I'll volunteer if we can't do anything.
We spent, two of us spent two and a half hours over at the common, picking up debris off the common.
That's another issue that's on the other, we can take that way here.
Yeah, I didn't say I was picking up that debris.
But while we're talking about debris on the other, if you've seen the emails going back and forth, we're gonna place signs on the common, we're gonna place signs down on Lewis Field, we're trying to attach, so there's, there's a dog excrement issue, people are not policing their dogs, and it's actually...
It's a town, it's a town bylaw.
It's disgusting, so we're gonna start enforcing that, and through, through that discussion, it's proposed a $100 fine for not policing, and then obviously the police department handles that, but once the signs are up, we're gonna become very diligent, diligent.
I saw some of the samples of the signs that came online today.
You got a question? How do you propose enforcing that law?
If you see, if you see somebody not picking it, well, it's not so much a, well, it's already bylaw, you're saying.
It's a town bylaw.
So if you don't, it's like seeing someone speeding, you pull them over and you give them a citation, if a police officer sees it.
So is it gonna be enforcing dog excrement?
100, on a, on a town common, 100%.
Okay.
100%.
Are they aware that they have to be doing that?
They're in the loop, but once the signs are up, they're gonna become very aware of it.
Aren't they gonna put some down by Lewis Field, too?
Yes.
He's, he's actually locking up the fields now, because it's such an issue. It's absolutely disgusting.
Well, I know two little kids that got into it, maybe realized...
It's disgusting.
I know one of them was a common, is that the...
People should be ashamed of themselves.
There's one, two, three, four, there's at least four sets of dogs that we know definitely whose they are.
That the police need to start knocking, police need to start knocking on doors.
One, that's going to be bad.
I'll call Mike, once we get out of here, and see what's... I'll call Mike once we get out of here and see what he's doing about it firsthand.
Has anybody been mowing the Lewis Field? 'Cause I know that they started getting, who's doing that?
They're volunteers, there's two volunteers. Same individual that we recognized last year.
On the cleanup day, they were doing it.
Lot going on down there cleanup day.
Yep.
All right. Item number six, I'll entertain a motion to accept with regret Ms. Vitello's resignation as a Brookfield ACO inspector.
I'll make that motion.
And sending a letter of appreciation. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number seven, I'll entertain a motion to appoint, oh, pa, 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 where's the name? Ms. Purdue as a new animal control officer, term to expire June 30th, 2016.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
What's the, you have a rate on that, Steve, or across it? Make sure the budget is okay with you.
Is there, is there a amount on there? I don't, that's not a...
No. It's probably whatever the salary sheet asks for.
She never came in with the budget, so we just, uh...
Level funded it?
Yeah, just so you know that.
She's, she's always pretty much, I think she came once for materials years ago to...
She always came in before, it's just this year's only year.
Um, pa, 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 item number eight, entertain a motion to allow Q Q L A the use of South Pond on May 28th, 2016, three vehicles, 10 boats from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. Welcome to summer picnic.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you sign this claim or do I?
I, I have in the past.
Be my guest.
Going for it.
Entertain a motion to allow the Q Q L A use of South Pond on 7/2/16, um, 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. Vehicles 10, I, zero, boats 10.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Do we have a second? I mean, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to allow Northern Bass Alliance use of South Pond on October 2nd, 2016, nine vehicles, nine boats.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Where did you put mine in Karen, that I wanted to...
Oh, Steve said, Steve said that it didn't have to go before the board, that the office can make the decision. So yes, you may have permission to use the town.
Thank you.
The administrative assistant, we gave permission, uh, years ago, Peter Rudy and I, instead of going before the board for use of the town hall, the board didn't know what's scheduled, the big schedules in there that Paul and Karen go over. So we decided, and it's on vote, you can look for it, that the administrative assistant had the ability to allow use of town hall.
Okay, thank you.
And there is an application, if you wanna go through the application process, but I don't think it's necessary for your purpose.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine, we already did that, May 16th, 7 p.m. Other we already dealt with, I think there was only one.
Uh, I've got one.
Yeah, right.
So in our conversation, Cindy and I were invited to a, a energy meeting, or Herb as well, and Cindy and I could not attend because of other conflicts and the like. And so as a kind of outpouring from that, the Tantascwa, and the name escapes me at the moment because I didn't bring it with me, but we had the opportunity to have Tantascwa's energy expert to come through town hall and Highway Barn the other day. What we learned in just conversation, are there some things that we can do from an energy perspective?
Just turn all the lights off?
Uh, no, we actually do quite well. It's actually, in the case of Herb, it would be some LEDs to go upgrade to LEDs. So you have them on timers and you're doing the right thing, but LEDs would in fact do, have more light...
What the other programs they supplied, the fixtures, are they doing that again or...
Okay, so there's, there's at least three, three buckets that we can play with. So the first bucket is that they replace and based on you not having to pay more for your electric bill, you're, you're actually paying for the bulbs as a part of your bill. So that's a kind of a first level. And in fact, Cindy's gonna receive a proposal, Herb and Cindy are gonna receive a proposal where he's done a study of the bulbs that could be changed at the Highway Barn. And so that, that'll come to us. And again, would be paid. But there, there's a second tier of work where we, and what I'm actually suggesting is that we have the building inspector come to this meeting or we can do it in the department head meeting and have a conversation. Because the town is eligible for between 140 and 160,000 dollars of grant money that's reimbursable. So if you spent 25, you get 25 back for energy-related projects that fall under the guidelines of this. If you, in your building codes, say that you need to work to the latest green eligibility for, for new construction. So it's something that we, we should talk about because there's 140 or 160,000 bucks that's sitting out there.
Which I believe this came up years ago and we chose not to implement it.
Yep, okay, well, then all I'm suggesting is 140 or 160,000 bucks to do things around the town hall might be a good idea to rethink.
I'm, I'm still not on board with it because I don't think we're gonna spend that much money here and it's just another regulation that we really don't need in town.
I think we oughta talk about it.
Yeah, definitely. So let's, let's wait, let's wait for the proposal.
Because now the third is once you get through that chunk of money and, and again, if we were to do something in the town hall, and I'm talking in the renovation activity and whatnot, there's a third tier of money where you can get up to 250,000 dollars a year if you're part of that program. You, you go through the first 140 or 160, depending on the type of town.
So can I make a recommendation that you give Mr. Taylor a call?
Yeah.
This is the same fellow that you had in the other day that I met, I met him the other day.
Yes.
'Cause this came up about three years ago.
Okay, so I think, time to think about revisiting. The other, the other piece to this puzzle is we're also spending or consuming 30% more. When you did the solar stuff, you decided what your energy usage, usage was going to be. And what we're doing today is spending more than 30%, more than what we thought.
Can we readjust that figure or are we locked into it forever?
Well, you only have so much coming at you and, and you're now, you're expending monies for energy in the buildings that you have. And this was before the police station, so it can't, it's just not the police station.
No, it hasn't been online that long.
Exactly. And so we are consuming 30% more than we should. And instead of going and buying a bunch more solar cells, you oughta be thinking about conserving. Again, that's what prompted me to think about what, what are the grant opportunities that we might have available.
But it hinges on that green piece.
It does. So that, that information is forthcoming and once that happens, I'll get a hold of Jeff.
Any other other?
Um, it was just very shortly, I gave, um...
Oh, yeah.
The new employee is the draft, I gave you for the employee handbook. And I just wanted to let you know that we do have a few more sections that we do need to put in it. We, uh, we went over the Selectment's policy book and pretty much everything was all covered in that except for the one for the snow policy that they had set back in 2007. And then we were gonna have, we're gonna put in some different forms in there too, like, you know, sexual harassment forms, we're gonna put in forms for vacation, mileage, and a lot of those different things, that's gonna be included in it also. And then we just wanted to let you know, you know, that we went through many hand, other town handbooks before we actually settled on what we were gonna use. And the ones that we used were ideas from Wales, North Brookfield, and Barrow. So we went through them.
I think we already have a policy for mileage, if you wanna check on that.
Oh, we do, but what we're saying though, we're gonna, we're gonna put the files in there. The fi, I mean, we're gonna put the form in there for the mileage, so people will have that. And then another thing, we wanted you also to know that we got a lot of information too from the employment law guide that was put out by the Mass-Boston Bar Association. So we went through a lot of things that they also had too. And then when fiscal, new fiscal year comes in, we're gonna start working on stepping green. So we just wanted to let you know in all the work that we've put into it and, you know, we worked very diligently on it from last July up until now in the committee. We've all worked well together and we all wanna be reappointed for new terms.
There you go.
We did, we worked out.
Fully campaigning.
Okay.
Well...
Yep.
Say something real quick, I don't wanna put a...
Deeper?
They're, they're doing a good job outside when they're in those, you know, that committee and everything else. Snow falls. When that does happen, what happens with the, with the rest of the town employees that have to worry? How do you wanna, a curveball out there at that?
Well, we went after, but we haven't really worked on it yet.
So I don't understand the question. You guys are compensated at a higher rate for, for plowing. You have...
During the daytime, we get our pay regular rate. Well, I guess what I'm hitting at is, you say the town hall's closed, everybody stays home or whatever.
Oh, so, okay, you just...
They do whatever with pay, however they're gonna do it. We have to come in and work no matter what.
I think what, what the...
I, I just wanna curveball out there.
So, so, what a lot of people don't understand is a lot of people in this building are elected. Um, the ones that are appointed or hired, um, in the past, they're here, they come in. And if they're not gonna come in, they take personal days.
They take a personal day.
So there's, there's really no effect to the town.
Yeah, well, we took, we looked at the one, you know, the two that is, we have. You want, you want to take a personal day when it snows?
You got a month of vacation, go for it.
Yeah, you're gonna take a month.
Take it in the winter, not in the summer.
Don't tell me.
You want us to put that in?
No.
No, don't put it in.
You know what, did Eric, I need a copy of that tape. I'm over Jesus.
No, we're gonna review it more 'cause there was a policy back in 2007.
A slight curveball.
It's not a cur, it's not a curveball at all, it should be addressed in that handbook.
Well, that's what I mean.
Yeah, we're gonna go, well, that's one of the ones that we have to add to it. Because we had, we've had a lot of questions, Herb, on that.
Yeah.
A lot of questions that come forward on that.
That's good, that's good.
All right, correspondence, the fire chief has informed this board that the copier that used to be in that room that migrated over there is no longer worth repairing. So he's asking us to put into surplus, I'm assuming nobody wants it. Uh, once we put that out, if nobody wants it, uh, he's asking to dispose of it. So I'll entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Cub Scout PAC 159 of Brookfield, Mass., which they should be congratulated because I believe it's one of the first troops in Brookfield for a long time.
Oh, yes, it is.
Doing a great job.
And they're growing every day.
Yep.
Uh, they're requesting the use of the town common on August 13th, 2016 for an overnight encampment that will act as a recruiting drive to promote the program and encourage new members. I will entertain a motion to allow the PAC use of the town common on Sunday.
Second. Good for them.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I was a Cub, I, I did Cub Scouts years ago.
With Billy or yourself?
With Billy.
Oh, okay.
We did it in our, we used to do it in our homes and we had, we had quite the crew.
Pine, was it pine box drivers?
Pine wood derby, yeah.
We did, I did it with Karen's sister Donna Pluff, who no longer lives here in town. We used to have meetings at my house and then we had meetings at her house. It's a lot of things with the kids.
I'm a former Cub and Scout master, so I know the drill. And, and the, both the boy and the Cub Scouts are tarred by the church and we encourage them and it's just, they're growing well and doing good.
'Cause I know for a while we shouldn't have one because I know the kids used to go to East Brookfield.
Yeah.
That's great, they've got it back again.
Great program.
Yes, it is.
Um, correspondence, National Grid is reaching us to us again for their mechanical control. Again, I would ask that we forward this to the Conservation Commission. They had issues. Charter's informing us that the annual financial report for Massachusetts is on file in the town hall. Anybody wishing to view that can do so at their leisure. Did you have your hand up, Herb? Any other issues, questions, problems?
I wish Sharon was here earlier. We had a moment of silence for Alan Martell, who used to be our former highway supervisor. And then I had written up a little statement on it that I had read earlier too, so, you know.
Individual that will truly be missed.
He will be.
But yet celebrated.
Yes.
Maybe you should be greeted again by that.
Go for it.
You want me to?
Yeah, please.
Oh, okay, I thought it was kind of a nice thing. Where is it? Oh, it's right here, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. A week, a week ago, we lost a wonderful man. I met Alan when he moved to Brookfield in the early 70s after his home in West Brookfield was destroyed by a fire. I had the pleasure of knowing Alan for over 40 years as a friend. When he was hired to be the highway superintendent, he said that was his retirement job. He worked for the town for 26 years, retiring at an early age of 83. He was a crusty old Vermonter and Alan touched many of the hearts of people who knew him. I walked every day by his house. I always got a wave and a smile and he watched me every day for the last days before he passed away. And it seemed that he always knew every time I walked by the house because, you know, he'd look out and he'd always smile, it was always a wave. And I'll miss him. No, uh, what else here? Nobody I ever knew before took such pride in taking care of our roads in Brookfield than Alan. And on, on our lighter side, he always promised me a sidewalk on Quaybog Street. Maybe someday when I meet him again, he'll have a sidewalk prepared for me.
Paved in gold.
Yeah, paved, paved in gold. God bless you, Alan, and rest in peace.
Truly missed.
He will, he's, he was a wonderful man to know, yeah.
Um, and what we didn't do even with cameras, congratulate Ms. Lincoln on her reelection.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Congratulations, ma'am.
Thank you very much and I thank all the voters who supported me. And I guess I made them happy over the last three years and I hope I'll be able to do the same for them the next three years.
Definitely. All right, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session under exemption number two to conduct strategy sessions and preparations for non, uh, for negotiations with non-union personnel to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to enter back into regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Come to our eye.
Lincoln, aye.
Snyder, aye.
Thank you, everyone.